May I welcome deputations and members of the community for attending the Subcommittee on Matters Relatives. So, welcome all of you. I'd like to remind everyone that if you wish, you may put on the earpiece and on the panel in front of you, you can choose the channel appropriate. Channel one is Cantonese, channel two is English. And may I remind all of you that the views expressed at this meeting, both oral or written, will not be protected by the Legislative Council Pass and Privileges Ordinance Cap 382. And when you speak in a moment, each of you will be given three minutes. So I will invite Under-Secretary to say a few words first. Under-Secretary.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, deputations, for attending this meeting, for expressing your views to us. The government has commissioned the consultancy to review the and update the Railways Development Strategy 2000 to update the Long-Term Railway Development Blueprint. And we started a three-month second-stage public engagement exercise to consult the public on seven local enhancement schemes. On the first of March, we briefed the members on the Stage Two Public Engagement Exercise and sought views from members on the various enhancement schemes. The consultation exercise has been conducted in an interactive manner. We have held rolling exhibitions and four public forums, and members of the public may access the information and express their views on the website through and also to forward their comments through email, fax, and post. And we have also consulted the Transport Advisory Committee, District Councils, Rural Area Committees, Academics, the Business Sectors, and Professional Bodies with a view to collecting the views from different facets of society. Today, a number of deputations have come. They are from various sectors of community, and I'd like to invite them to comment on the seven local enhancement schemes. On different occasions, we have heard members of the public saying that there is a lack of details or financial data in the proposal for consultation. I'd like to emphasize that we are consulting the public on the conceptual design of the various proposals so that on a strategic level, in terms of the overall development and direction of development, we explore with the public railway for the future. So in terms of how these proposals are to be implemented, we do not have a preconceived stance. We are discussing with the public with an open mind, and if in future if we are minded to rule out any proposal, we will continue to discuss with the public and we will consult the public as appropriate. We will provide more technical details in future. We expect to finish the consultancy study within this year. The government will make reference to the recommendations from the consultant. In meeting transportation demand, cost-effectiveness, and to tie in with the development of NDAs, we will formulate the blueprint for future railway development so that we will brief members of the public on the various railway proposals by 2014. So much for my introductory remarks. Thank you, Chairman.
Today, we have forty-odd deputations or individuals with us. Each of them will have three minutes to add their views. If you haven't submitted any written comments to us, you're welcome to do so after the meeting. Number one, Mr. Young Han Sing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Young Han Sing. I have consulted our residents. They all support the conceptual study. That is, to add a spur line at Suzai Wan. We support all the schemes, but there are technical difficulties, whether it's a spur line, an extension, or a bifurcation. In general, our residents are inclined to support the proposals. You can recall that previously, when we built the Tsuen Wan Line, we also had a lot of difficulties along Nathan Road. So we would urge the administration to build the Suzai Wan spur line as soon as possible. We have a lot of sports facilities in Suzai Wan. We also have other facilities like the promenade and the country park. We would like to link all these facilities to the Southern District that will benefit the overall development of Hong Kong. And given the Suzai Wan Line, we'll be able to link up the northern and southern parts of Hong Kong Island. Now, we have a population of 60,000 people. In future, that will continue to rise. So in general, our residents support the proposals in all the three schemes. Thank you.
Mr. Young Han Wing. Mr. Chairman, I'm the representative of the DAB Central and Western Branch. Let me comment on this consultation document. We would like to comment on two major aspects. For the North Island Line, two schemes were proposed, the interchange scheme and the swap scheme. For the swap scheme, the island line will be chopped up into two sections in order to improve the journey time between the east and the west. After the commissioning of the NIL, people can travel directly from Kennedy Town to Chaiwan. But given this swap scheme, commuters will have to make an interchange at Poi Bay, North Point, or Central, thus inconveniencing the commuters. And commuters have to change their transport habits. And also, the Tongchung Line will pass through Tsingma Bridge. The maximum frequency will be subject to constraints, and the frequency is bound to be reduced, thus resulting in passenger congestion. So relatively speaking, we believe the interchange scheme will be more acceptable to the public because passengers along the island line won't have to change their traffic habits, and Changkwan O passengers will also benefit. Tongchung passengers will also benefit. So the interchange scheme will not change the present integrity of the island line. Next, Ms. Chung Kaman. Mr. Chairman, we consulted Wan Chi residents and came up with the following two viewpoints. In fact, all along, we've been using the island line. From Chaiwan to Shang Wan, we have a through rail line. So this is already a very natural habit for our residents. From the east to the west, our commuters would like to have a through line. The Changkwan O line came later. So to interchange at Poi Bay and North Point is already a habit for our passengers. Island residents and Changkwan O residents have their respective habits. So Wan Chi residents told me to tell you that they support the interchange scheme, particularly for island residents. That's point number one. Secondly, as we are going to have a new rail line, in particular, a parallel mode of rail lines, subways must be built to link up various stations. For example, between Tsingma and Admiralty, you're going to build a subway to link up the two stations. And for Northway, Coastway Bay North and Coastway Bay, they should also be linked up. You conducted a consultation on a subway system in Coastway Bay. Therefore, we hope that at the same time, you should expedite the construction of the subway system, in particular consultation and engineering works. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Lee Kwan Yee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm also a Wan Chi District Councillor. I'd like to represent our residents to air their views on these rail line developments. In 2012, we got a demographic forecast. Wan Chi District will have the highest number or percentage of elders. Twenty-three point eight percent in Wan Chi, eastern twenty-three point seven percent, central and western twenty-two point two percent, and southern district twenty-one point four percent. And in future, these four districts will have the highest percentage of elderly population amongst all the eighteen districts. That's why we would like to have an integral rail line on Hong Kong Island. That is, we would like to have a through rail line from Kennedy Town to Chaiwan. This is the common wish of our elders. Because if we are to interchange at Fortress Hill or North Point, it would be inconvenient for the elders because many elders have foot pain. So please take on board this view. As for Coastway Bay North, within a walking distance of fifteen minutes, you have a business district, but it is not a CBD. It is not a major business district. Now, in future, if you are really to have the Coastway Bay North Station, will you consider at the waterfront position north of Victoria Park? How many people and visitors will be visiting the waterfront? So you must do some accurate projections in order to attain economic benefit. In future, if we are to use this Coastway Bay North Station scheme, that is the swap scheme, I hope you can build a subway to link up the Coastway Bay North Station and Coastway Bay Station so as to bring vibrant sea and tourism atmosphere to the area and bring commuters to the waterfront. Thank you. Next, Ms. David Wong Chao Fong. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm David Wong, a Wan Chi District Councillor. I'd like to say something about the North Island Line. The NIL runs through a number of major business districts on Hong Kong Island with a number of job opportunities. Upon the completion of the SIL, we'll need more rail line service to link up the northern and southern parts of Hong Kong Island. But the three proposed new stations are farther away from the major business areas. Therefore, MTR stations have to be linked up with the business areas. We need more pedestrian foot bridges, and if possible, you should have underground connections between the stations so as to attain the highest cost-effectiveness. Now, there are two schemes proposed for the NIL. The interchange scheme will break up the existing NIL, thus inconveniencing the commuters. So I won't comment on the details. As for the swap scheme, the document says that Tsingma Bridge does impact constraints on Tongchung Line. So if we opt for the swap scheme, the frequency of trains for NIL may be affected. Similarly, if we have the swap scheme, at Eastern Harbour Crossing, there'll be a bottleneck. If it is to share facilities with the Tongchung Line, more bottlenecks may be created. I understand that certain data cannot be disclosed at this juncture. But I think if you ask the public to choose between the interchange scheme and the swap scheme, you must provide them with more data. All right, if we do not opt for the swap scheme but the interchange scheme, then connections among various pedestrian facilities will have to be enhanced. I won't dwell on the details. Anyway, I hope that the Bureau will provide the public with more information and data for consultation. Thank you. Next, Mr. Kung Pak Cheung. Good morning. I'm Kung Pak Cheung, an eastern district councillor. I've been living in Chaiwan for thirty-odd years. I've been a district councillor since 1994, and all along, I've been striving for MTR services in Suzai Wan. But still, the government is in the consultation stage only. Suzai Wan residents earnestly need MTR service. We distributed over 10,000 publicity leaflets. We do have urgent need. Now, you consult us, but we're not experts. We're the users. Users are to express views such that the experts will handle our views. That is, to benefit the public. For the NIL, it should be kept integral. Many deputations and individuals have spoken on that. I won't repeat them. Anyway, we would like to have service at Suzai Wan as soon as possible. Next, Mr. Zimmerman.
We fully support the seven schemes, and we invite government to proceed as soon as possible to detailed studies because they are local enhancement schemes. The only way to judge them or whether they make sense is to have much more detail locally about the costs, the benefits, not just only financially, but also on the environment and the travel behavior of the passengers and the opportunities for the passengers. So the sooner we see those details, the sooner we can have the discussion correctly. We should avoid all rail above ground where possible as a principle to minimize impacts. It's a higher cost, but I think it reduces impacts on the community. As both the CEO of Designing Hong Kong and a district councillor in the Southern District responsible for Pock Fulam, we're extremely concerned about an above-rail option along Cyberport Road. We believe it's absolutely possible to have both a station at Queen Mary and a station in the Wafu area and a station in Cyberport without above an exposed rail line. So we want to see those options, and I think that if those options can be presented to the community that I represent in Pock Fulam will support the rail, but it must be underground, not exposed. If it's exposed, we're going to have a lot of opposition in the neighborhood, that is for sure. In general, for the Hong Kong Island Line and the idea for whether it should be a swap or an interchange arrangement, it's quite interesting to hear those who speak on behalf of people that may be impacted and will have to learn a new behavior, they oppose. But I think we should look at it coldly in the benefit of Hong Kong as a whole. A swap arrangement will be a better deal for Hong Kong as a whole, and therefore, Designing Hong Kong supports a swap arrangement. The longest and greatest number of stations on each individual line will be a great benefit for the community as a whole. Some people will have to change behavior, and that is politically always an issue, but we'll have to get through it as a community because we win as a whole. Chairman, those are, in general, the comments on the rail line. I heard some comments this morning about pedestrianization and pedestrian links. I have not made a submission on this, but Designing Hong Kong is working very hard looking at pedestrian issues. And pedestrian issues should be looked at not just as linkages between stations. We should look at how can we create great pedestrian neighborhoods and districts where the stations are part of it. So in addition to this railway development, can we at the same time really look at the district-area pedestrian planning? Not just foot bridges, not just tunnels. How does the networks of each district work, both ground, at ground, and below ground? Thank you.
Next, Mr. Zhang Guocheng. Thank you, Chairman. I am assistant to District Councillor Joanna Lang. First, I say that we are opposing the swap scheme because between Fortress Hill and Coastway Bay, the line will be cut for those traveling from Taiko. They need to interchange at North Point. According to MTR CL's information, for Tongchung Line, the highest frequency is affected. Train frequency is affected by the Tsingma Bridge structure, and once the island line is separated like this, the highest frequency of the eastern half of the island line from Fortress Hill Station to Chaiwan Station will be reduced by eight trains per hour. So it will be much less frequent. And for the swap scheme, we think that in Poi Bay, it will become a bottleneck for people traveling from Changkwan O, etc. Because of the reduced trains per hour, it cannot relieve passengers. And for those traveling through the island side, it cannot divert passengers. And according to population projections, there will be 81,000 elderly in eastern districts. So eastern district will become a city of the elderly. It's very inconvenient if they're required to change lines. And we have a street signing campaign. We explained the swap schemes and the interchange scheme and the pros and cons, and on the whole, our residents are of the view that the interchange option is more viable. And the Democratic Party thinks that the reason for having interchange stations in Central Admiralty is because it's where people congregate. People mostly concentrate along the traditional island line. So whether people can be attracted to take the new island line, there is a question here. To protect the interests of the local residents, we support the interchange scheme. So I hope the administration will support the interchange scheme. We oppose to cutting the island line into halves. Next, Mr. Chen Ka Pak. Thank you, Chairman. I am representing the office of Honorable Mr. Sin Chung Kai. And we had a street signing campaign. We received a lot of views. Over ninety percent of the respondents oppose the swap scheme because the major shortcoming of the swap scheme is that the eastern half of the island side can no longer reach Central and Western directly. They need to interchange at North Point, and this will create a longer journey time for them. And apart from interchanging at Poi Bay and North Point Station, the train frequency will also be reduced, so they strongly oppose the swap scheme. And the people with disabilities told me that they need assistance of the MTR officer to board in a light, and whenever they do so, they need to travel to the first compartment of each train, and they need to travel a far distance to do that. And for the swap scheme, it's suggested that the passenger load can be relieved, but in fact, Admiralty Station will experience a heavier load because one would need to change from Central Station to Admiralty and then from Admiralty to further to other stations. And eastern district people living there, well, needless to say, they need to interchange at North Point before they can go to Central and Western. And we also have the South Island Line, and people will take the Shatin Central Link to Admiralty for interchange to Southern District. And we don't think that the passenger flow can be relieved.
Next, Mr. Michael Lee. Thank you, Chairman. I'm Michael Lee, eastern district councillor. Well, many have talked about the pros and cons of the swap scheme and the interchange scheme. And for the swap scheme, people from Changkwan O can go directly to Hong Kong Island, whereas for interchange scheme, the island line, which has been commissioned for more than twenty years, can be reserved in whole. But on the whole, I hope the administration will provide more data for us to understand better the two schemes, and I hope the administration could consult consult the public further on the two schemes. According to our survey, over ninety percent of residents would like to would go for the interchange scheme. According to RDS 2000, the North Island Line should have been commissioned in 2008. So we should have this line long ago. Now, there is heavy congestion along Changkwan O Line, and the government therefore should implement a timetable as soon as possible. The exhibitions station will be the interchange station for Shatin Central Link. And the North Island Line should be commissioned before the date of commissioning of Shatin Central Link to avoid cramming of Admiralty Station. And there should be higher train frequency for Changkwan O Line. For Lohe's Park Station, there is ready great dissatisfaction there. For Suzai Wan Extension, for decades, residents have been longing for the Suzai Wan Line, and there are over 10,000 residents in Suzai Wan. So it's highly cost-effective for this line to be built. There are three schemes. Regardless of which one is chosen, we hope the Suzai Wan Line can be built as soon as possible. Now, I'd like to talk about the spur line as well. For the Suzai Wan feeder Suzai Wan Extension Scheme, I ask residents in Suzai Wan, it's just like Pock Fulam and Lohe's Park, the three-plus-one option. We don't want the train frequency to be reduced. That's the bifurcation scheme, and for this scheme, the Chaiwan Cargo Handling Basin might have to be filled up. And as we know, the government is already lacking cargo handling basin. The administration should consider that. Thank you. Next, Ms. Young Seo Pick.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm a resident in Southern District. I was once a Southern District Councillor. I'd like to talk about the SIL West. We collected views from local residents. I also have firsthand experience in the district. We understand that the extension might be built by sections, and the residents are angry. They are dissatisfied. Since the 1990s, we have been talking about the construction of South Island Line. Now, the SIL East project has been commissioned, and the West extension is still in the pipeline. Over the past decades, traffic has been a major problem in the Southern District. We can only rely on the corridor on the east and west side. We had Pock Fulam on the one hand and the Aberdeen Tunnel on the other. If the stretch from Wafu and Wong Chuk Hang is built first, that would mean pushing all the residents to the east side, and I mean for those who need to go to the Hong Kong Island and Kowloon. And as told by bus drivers, should there be any accident on the road, And as told by bus drivers, should there be any accident on the road, there is no way they can transport the passengers away. We really need a railway line to divert passengers to the west side of the island. I recalled on one occasion during typhoon, a tree fell down in Poh Fu Lam, blocking the road. And as a result, the road was obstructed. And you can see the economic benefits of connecting Aberdeen with Western District. Our XRL is on the west side, Kowloon, West Kowloon Cultural District is on the west as well, Lantau as well. If we need more land for housing purposes and for commercial buildings, we need to develop the west side. So if we do not refine the network and divert people to the west side, it will be a total failure in our planning. Well, the government might decide to put it on the backburners if it's not constructed in two phases. But I think that this is not the right logic. If the government is determined to do it, they must come up with ways to do it. It takes eight to ten years for the railway line to be constructed. If we construct the Wahfu section first and consider whether Poh Fu Lam section should go ahead, it will take another ten or twenty years. So altogether, we would have been discussing this line for forty years. It would be hopeless for the middle aged, let alone the elderly. So I hope the administration could heed my view. Next, Mr. Al Loop Him. Chairman, may I be allowed to remain standing while I speak? I think this, the government has no alternative but to liaise with DAB. In year two thousand, well at that time, the proposal was that the whole section from Wahfu will be, to Ocean Park will be constructed to the wholly. But, and then the DAB in twenty oh eight suggested building the other sections before building Poh Fu Lam stretch. In fact, they're selling out people in the Southern District. Well, I, we think that there are several possibilities. One is to say, to give some comments and gauge a public opinion. And the second is to, is to take on board DAB's views. So how can people in Southern District go to Queen Mary Hospital or go to Hong Kong University without this line?
Well, yes, the Poh Fu Lam section is controversial. Mr. Paul Zimmerman already said that Poh Fu Lam residents do not support the elevated scheme. There's also controversy as to whether or not there should be a station there. But that does not mean that they fully oppose the SIL. Well, if you go up Shaipai Wan Road, you'll ask why the government should evade the issue. Now, we have this Chinese saying that certain people put forth options and suggestions that evade issues. That's what the DAB has been doing. Why not strive for a consensus so that we can have a full SIL? Why should we give up the achievements attained by Southern District residents all these years? So let me reiterate, we oppose a segmented option. Mr. Yao and his official should support a full implementation of the SIL. As for the DAB members, they sacrifice the interest of the Southern District residents. They will have to pay a price. Up to the end of my life, I have to struggle with them. Next, Ms. Laie He Lam.
Good morning. I am Laie He Lam. In the form of an underground rail line, Tin Wan, Poh Fu Lam, Aberdeen, and University of Hong Kong should be linked up. You should look at the actual transport needs of the residents. Besides, you have to look at the overall planning of our railway network in analyzing this issue. First of all, for Wahfu, Poh Fu Lam, and Aberdeen residents, don't think that they're all rich people or middle-class people, don't think that all of them drive. In actual fact, like us, they take congested buses to go to work and go to school. And there are many elderly people in our housing estates. Four-fifths of our population are middle-aged and young people. They also need transport service. If you look at the overall planning for our railway network, if all Southern District residents go to Wong Chok Hang Station and Admiralty Station to make a transfer, it would be very inconvenient for our residents. At the same time, those two stations will be burst to their seams. Now, you have to look at the whole forest instead of just one tree or trees. So you should revisit your proposal so that our residents will be able to have a vision for the future. Look at the Poh Fu Lam development. When you consider SIL West, you should consider that very often the government mentioned that Wahfu Estate might be redeveloped, and more land sites would be identified in the Southern District for the construction of PRH Estates. Now, all these are not just related to the interest of Southern District residents, but residents of other districts. Don't just think of luxury flats to facilitate the rich people. You should look at the needs of the general public in your thinking. As for other developments, you should consider the Queen Mary Hospital Development Project, which has ten more years to go. So the SIL should be built in one go. Thank you. Next, Mr. Tong Chi Poi.
I'm from the Democratic Party, I'm Tong Chi Poi. As for SIL West, the government proposes a fragmented approach. We propose that the SIL should be built, the SIL West should be built in one go to facilitate those who live and work in Southern District. As the consultation documents, it's concepts, consultation, construction, very often take ten years to complete. If the SIL West is to be separated, including SIL East, the whole line will be separated into three phases. Those political parties who've supported this option are either foolish or acting against public opinion. We reiterate that we support the construction of SIL West in one go. We cannot drag this on further, we cannot wait further. Mr. Paul Zimmerman has already said that the SIL West will be able to ease congestion in Aberdeen Tunnel as well as under patronage for our rail lines. Cyberport, Queen Mary Hospital, and University of Hong Kong should be linked up. Traffic and transport are inconvenient for Cyberport. We have very few routes, very low frequency. Therefore, job seekers are afraid to work in Cyberport. So how can we have all the experts and professionals converge in Cyberport to develop our IT industry? For Queen Mary Hospital, many island and Southern District residents have to go there for consultation. The road up to Queen Mary Hospital is steep and long. It takes twenty years to complete a railway. I don't think our elders and their family members can wait further. The resources of the government put in Queen Mary Hospital are not enough insofar as TNT are concerned. How can you still wait, how can you still ask our elders to wait? It's not compassionate at all. If you say that many Southern District residents are students of the Hong Kong U, then if you can complete SIL West in one go, you can ease the pressure on Hong Kong U Hostels. And many people can make use of the canteens in Hong Kong U. So SIL West should be constructed in one go and not cut up into different phases, and you should not continue to drag this issue on. Well, a number of deputations have arrived later, I invite them to speak again. First, Mr. Li Ming Hong, and then Ms. Fang Kwok San. Mr. Cheung Me Hong, Mr. Wong Kin Sing. All right, Mr. Li?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have already submitted a letter to the meeting before I came. Here, let me mention one point of principle. Railway construction, I believe, is supported by all political parties and councillors. Well, they will only strive for more railways in order to canvass votes. Now let me not dwell on those details. Have you read my letter, which asks what's a railway appendix? I wrote two paragraphs on that. One paragraph is about Wampu Garden. Originally, according to the initial design, there's no railway for Wampu Garden in the initial design of Shatin Central Link. And in the second stage, it's proposed that an automatic, that is non-manually operated loop should go to Wampu Garden. And then they give us the Kun Tong extension that goes through Homantin and Wampu Garden. So that's the present design. In future, the SCL will get a station at the junction of Woo Hu Street. The Wampu Garden Station is at the end of Woo Hu Street. Obviously, this is an appendix, it's just like an appendix. Well, another example is Lohe's Park. It's actually on the Chiang Kwan O, Chiang Kwan O Line. But suddenly, they built an appendix to Chiang Kwan O Line. So I'd like to ask the authorities, are you designing your railways to suit the benefits or interest of the big consortium? You see, very often, our railway projects are led by the big consortium. I don't know whether that's true. But two senior members of that particular consortium had worked with the MTRCL. I hope that political parties and councillors will not just eye their own votes. They must not undermine our transport interests. Taxis and minibuses have to earn a livelihood as well. Don't waste our public money. Many routes have a very low patronage. Next, Mr. Fang Kwok, Ms. Fang Kwok San.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I live in one of the appendices, that is Lohe's Park. All along, I've been striving for a North Island Line to cover Chiang Kwan O and East Kowloon as well. Because that area has a big population of one million people, that should be extended to the Convention and Exhibition Centre, and then further down to Island West and Tongchung. That will help complete our railway network. Yes, the Railway Development Strategy two thousand has neglected the residents of certain districts. Hong Kong Island residents, East Kowloon residents, which amount to one million people. So that extension should be built as soon as possible. But if the interchange scheme or the swap scheme, you have to listen to public opinion. For the past twenty-eight years, island residents were used to going through from Chiang Wan to Kennedy Town. They would like to have through service in future as well, they would like to enhance the island line. Now, from the viewpoint of Chiang Kwan O residents, is also a very ideal milestone because they started with zero service, and in future, they'll got, they'll get a dedicated service. Unfortunately, projects have been delayed for four to five years. Lampin Tunnel is an example. Railways are related to people's livelihood. Railways are the backbones of our transport network. Thus, many buses and feeder services have suffered. If you want to improve the island line, you should implement these proposals as soon as possible. Well, in particular, in Polam Station, back then, in order to save two hundred million people, we got one platform, let's, Polam has got one platform only. And for Lohe's Park, the plan did not consider Area one three seven, which is an area four times that of the Victoria Park. The government has always adopted a fragmented approach. No matter what, Chiang Kwan O Line should be extended to the Convention and Exhibition Centre. You should enhance those stations along the line. We should feel ashamed, we want to organize more exhibitions and conferences. But when businessmen come to Hong Kong, they are not served by any railway sufficiently. If we are a metropolitan, if we don't have a perfect railway network is a shame. Mr. Cheung Me Hong?
Members, government officials, good morning, I'm Cheung Me Hong. I'd like to talk about the views of local residents in Chiang Kwan O on the North Island Line. Now, the population in Chiang Kwan O is growing undoubtedly in twenty, by twenty sixteen, there'll be five hundred thousand people in Chiang Kwan O. For Polam and Hang Ho stations, they have reached their capacity. Close to one hundred thousand passengers use the MTR, Polam, and Hang Ho stations on a daily basis. And to save money, as said by the other deputation, Ms. Fang, the single platform design was used for Polam Station, the design is wrong. For Chiang Kwan O South, apart from Teuk King Ling and Chiang Kwan O Town Center, the Lohe's Park development is taking place very rapidly, and there'll be close to sixty thousand population very soon. And the area is getting more and more densely populated. The population is growing in Chiang Kwan O. So if we don't formulate a timetable for North Island Line, the residents in Chiang Kwan O will be affected. In RDS two thousand, the North Island Line was first floated, but the administration was shortsighted. They opined that the patronage was not very high. And at that time, they shelved the North Island Line plan. I hope the administration will not go back on its promise. It will not implement White Elephant projects just for the purpose of saving money. Well, some just commented on the swap scheme and interchange scheme of the North Island Line. And we all understand the pros and cons of the two schemes, I won't repeat them. I just want to urge the railway experts here and everyone here to come up with other alternatives. We hope that the interests of the eastern part of the island line, eastern part of the Hong Kong Island, will not be sacrificed or compromised. And our organization, the youth group, also proposes a number of suggestions. For example, can the western terminus of Chong Kuen O Line be extended to Shouan Line? This will not affect residents in the eastern district, but at the same time, it will reduce the chance of having bottlenecks. So we urge the North Island Line to be implemented as soon as possible. Next, Ms. Wong. I'm the convener and founder of the Action Group for Western District Spur Line. I am Nelson Wong Kin Sing. But today, I'm not going to talk about the western extension. I'm going to talk about the Sio Sai Wan Line. We know that the new academic structure of the universities have caused great traffic congestion near Hong Kong University. And I heard that for Queen Mary Hospital, the blockade will be expanded to a 21-story, spanning an area of 11 aside football pitch. So how can we rely on Pofu Lam Road to relieve traffic? Because it cannot be further widened. At present, Pofu Lam Road is already experiencing very heavy traffic congestion along Pofu Lam and also the mid-levels. It has paralyzed the traffic in that area. And recently, the chief executive is proposing to relax the building height restriction along Pofu Lam. And if this is implemented, traffic congestion in Pofu Lam will be even more serious. So I urge the administration to commence the S I L West project from Aberdeen to Wa Fu to Pofu Lam. While not necessarily passing Cyberport, it's up to you, but then it should go past Queen Mary Hospital, terminating at Hong Kong University. When we were striving for the western spur line, we were told that the site has been reserved within Hong Kong University Station for connection or interchange with the S I L West Line. And we hope that the administration can commence S I L West at once so as to facilitate residents in the central and western district and southern district in reaching their destinations, for example, Hong Kong University and the Queen Mary Hospital. Many staff members of the hospital are also living in these districts as well. I hope the government would heed our views. Next, Mr. Lo Kin He. Well, just now, Mr. Alok Hin already criticized D A B, and I'd like to share with you the history of F T U as well. On the 28th of May 2004, at the Transport Panel, and members may refer to the minutes in Para 56, Mr. Lan Fu Wah, said that the government should postpone the S I L West project until the population has reached a certain level. And the motion was passed urging the administration to shelve the S I L West plan and also to shelve the plan concerning developing the southern district into a tourism and business hub, etc. And the Liberal Party also supported it. It's really well, at that time, the construction cost was estimated to be 22 billion. That was in 2002. Residents had been waiting for this line. And the administration had been dragging on its feet with the obstacles coming from political parties, and now the administration has finally undertaken to build the projects. But altogether, these two lines are costing over $20 billion. And this West Island Line West, $15.4 billion, and South Island Line, $12.6 billion. So when Mr. Wong Kwok Hin is talking about the waste of public money, can they explain? The problem is, I don't know what the F T U members are thinking. I don't know whether they agree to the phased development of the South Island Line West. But now the D A B floated the idea of sectional development, and the administration actually heeded their views and came up with this consultation paper. You can look at the digest, Para 5.21. It's really very disappointing because the development can be phased with the Aberdeen section going first and the Pofu Lam section going second, and then everything about whether you support the phased development and whether there will be visual impact, etc., etc. So all these subjective views are incorporated in this consultation paper. So what's the use of consultation? Residents support the construction of the S I L West underground. I hope the D A B and F T U will stop ignoring the views of local residents. Well, I hope members or deputations here can express their own views from their personal perspective. I'm sorry, Chairman, what is the rule applicable? Because we're afraid of contravening the Legislative Council powers and privileges ordinance. I'll tell you later. No, I need to know now because I'm about to speak. I am convening this meeting. No, I am asking which rule are we contravening? I asked you to shut up. Chairman, you asked me to shut up. Shut up. I'm asking a point of order. I'm asking you to shut up. This is not the right time for you to raise a point of order. No, I need to know which rule we have contravened. I hope that when you speak, you should respect this council. You should speak from your own perspective. Mr. Cho Yuen Ma?
Mr. Cho Yuen Ma? Thank you, Chairman. I am a Southern District councillor. I need to defend my fellow party member. My fellow party member just spoke and gave his own comments, whether he was responding to the views expressed by other parties in the past. Well, that was his own view, and his view should be respected by this council. And I reiterate that the Democratic Party oppose phased development of the South Island Line. We think that the South Island Line should be commenced in one go. In the consultation paper, there was no mentioning of another paper in 2005, when the M T R C L and the Transport Bureau went to consult the Southern District Council on the South Island Line. At that time, there was a suggestion that a loop formed connecting the South Island Line with the North Island Line so as to relieve and improve traffic condition in the southern district. So when we look at the district's development and the transportation demand and cost effectiveness, a lot of deputations have spoken on these matters. I won't repeat them. I just want to talk about forward-looking ideas. Before the unification, we had the Rose Garden Scheme involving close to $100 billion at that time. So discounting inflation, comparing to this project involving a dozen billion dollars, well, that was a very big project, and it was in White Elephant. But at that time, if those projects had not been implemented, could we still enjoy this competitive edge? Could we still enjoy the infrastructure that we have today? This has to do with the how imaginative and how forward-looking members of the public as well as government officials are. And I see the administration is leading the public to opt for a phased development. Right. For population in Pofu Lam, at present, the population may not support the railway construction. But we have been talking about this line for over 20 years. When I was first district councillor, I have heard about it. I hope that by the time Mr. Chen retires, we will be able to see this line. This has not only to do with Mr. Chen, Mr. Henry Chen. This is also the aspiration of local residents in southern district. I hope the administration would heed our views and respect our views. I am speaking on my behalf. I'm also opposing other people's suggestions. Well, Mr. Alok Hin has remained standing, and I will also stand up while I speak. Well, I want to talk about the mistakes of D A B in 2004. Mr. Lan Fu Wah took the lead to oppose the development. And just now, as said by my fellow member, just now, even the Liberal Party supported the opposition, and we waited for 30 years. Now, what's the problem with D A B? D A B has the biggest problem. The problem is, even before consultation ends, it's floating an opposing idea. And that is, D A B thinks that the line should not be built in one go. The problem is, D A B, I mean, now the administration is telling the Southern District Council that even the consultancy firm think that it's feasible. We do not have any preconceived stance on whether it should be phased, but the D A B is already retreating. It's really beyond my imagination. Well, how can local residents take this option?
They even said that Pofu Lam residents opposed the idea. Well, I asked Mr. Paul Zimmerman, the councillor from that constituency. The residents only oppose an elevated approach, but they support the line itself. If D A B really wants to help the southern district residents, it should not have acted that way. The administration disregards public opinion. It goes its own way. That's really very disappointing. The district council does have a consensus. Well, the district council is using its previous consensus. What is that consensus? That is, before any new consensus, it will support the whole S I L. That's why I'm not sure whether the D A B members now support this consensus, or they have their own opinion, which is against the position of the Southern District Council. Unfortunately, the secretariat has separated us from them into two different sessions. So I cannot query them directly here. I still have some time. For S I L East, the Wong Chau Hang site is to fetch $50 billion proceeds. S I L East costing only $12.6 billion. So there'll be surplus to be distributed to the Treasury and the shareholders, and the remaining can actually be used for S I L West. Correct me if I'm wrong. Well, I'm Cheung Tat Hong from Civic Party. Railway extension is worthy of our support. There are merits, easing congestion, reduce air pollution, and so forth. As many participants have pointed out just now, all future railway developments have to take into account their impact on existing public services. We cannot reduce existing services and weaken the flexibility available to the residents. So we support all the proposed rail line. This S I L West, the Hong Shui Kiu Spur Line, and so forth. But we must not sacrifice traffic fares. Now, let me come back to S I L West. It will go through Aberdeen, Wa Fu, and Hong Kong U Station. That is, to link up the S I L and the West Island Line to form a circular line. That's the original proposal. It's completely different from what the government is proposing. The government is proposing a segmented approach. The Civic Party sees no reason for the government to come up with this new proposal. Why can't we address the density problem at Pofu Lam and build a circular route? As for the Sio Sai Wan Line, the Civic Party welcomes its inclusion in the planning for Hong Kong Island. As for the two schemes, the interchange scheme will meet with less difficulties. But the government must give us more data on the interchange scheme and the swap scheme. As for the N I L, it's very controversial. The swap scheme will benefit Chong Kuen O residents. But for island residents, because of Ching Ma Bridge, the frequency will be reduced by eight trains per hour. That is unacceptable. To reduce disputes, the Civic Party is of the view that no final option should cause the frequency on the Hong Kong Line to be reduced. The Civic Party suggests that at interchange stations like North Point and Ching Wei Stations, more access should be provided to facilitate the commuters. Finally, be it the M T R C L or the government, before implementing any plan, there must be public engagement at every stage to make sure that the final option is acceptable to the public. Ms. Tung Minkah? Mr. Chairman, I'm a retired M T R C L staff member. I don't speak on behalf of the M T R. I speak on behalf of our concerned group. Railways are more environmentally friendly as a mode of transport. So we should proceed as soon as possible instead of delaying and delaying. Now, the information provided in the consultation documents are misleading, resulting in unnecessary discussion and unnecessary time wasted. For example, it said that the Tong Chung Line and the Chong Kuen O Line should be extended earlier or later as a result of population. This can be a reason to delay the extensions for, say, up to decades, 30 years maybe. And without the data and information, we cannot see the difficulties. Now, for the swap scheme, the document said that it may inconvenience the residents. They cite Tong Kong Station and Central Station as examples. It's time-wasting to have an interchange there. They also cite the Quarry Bay Station as another example of difficult interchange. But they do not mention that in future, the commuters can have an interchange very conveniently. Those say in the first car of the train can interchange to the first car of another train on the other line. So in fact, in this document, there are a great deal of misleading information. If you're not careful, you'll be guided by them. You'll think that there'll be trouble, and Ching Ma Bridge may reduce the frequency by eight trains per hour. But can you design the line such that it doesn't go through Ching Ma Bridge? You can add other extensions and spur lines so that they get connected. You can add other extensions and spur lines so that they get connected to Shatin Central Link, et cetera, et cetera. Now, all these possibilities they don't mention. Actually, in the consultation document, they can give a lot more scenarios. In fact, it is possible for interchange at the same level. And they don't mention whether in future, the N I L can be linked with S E L. Well, I'm an I T person. You can have computer simulation. All these options and schemes can be provided to the public in computer simulation models. Then people will find it easier to tell which option is better. Next, Mr Chairman. We're operators of franchised minibuses. Just now, many people talked about the expansion of the railway network. At the same time, I'd like you to pay attention to the impact of railways on minibus services. For a number of years, the amalgamation of the two railway corporations, as well as other railway development projects, had resulted in worries in the transport industry. Over a decade ago, there was this transport study, which made minibuses supportive means of transport only, and railways will become the backbone. Given the Maan Line, Ma An Chan, Spur Line, and other new railways, the business of minibuses was hugely affected. After the amalgamation of the two railway corporations, the M T R C L has been taking up a higher percentage or a higher share of business. They've been providing feeder bus services also, further eroding the business of the minibuses. The government has always said that railway should take the lead in transport development, but that's not true. The Chang Kwan O Line was commissioned in 2002. At that time, they have a population of three hundred and fifty thousand people. Road transport has lost a huge percentage of their business. And the government has approved continuously reduction plans for minibus services. Therefore, at present, passengers in certain areas are inconvenienced. They've been grabbing away business from the minibuses. There must be another comprehensive transport study for medium and short-haul journeys. For example, for those routes with two thousand to five thousand passengers should be served by minibuses. Secondly, the W I L will be commissioned by the end of next year. The government should consult the minibus industry to expand minibus service in Southern District to enhance the feeder services from Sai Ying Pond to Puk Llam and then to the Southern District. The government should pay attention to the room of survival of the minibus industry. Next, Mr Chairman. Chang Kwan O Line was planned in the nineteen nineties. In August 2002, Chang Kwan O Line was commissioned, and the Kuntong Line was extended to the southern part of Chang Kwan O. Back then, the government told us that we would have the N I L as a next stage. And Chang Kwan O residents were told that in future, they could get connected to Central. And between 2008 and 2012, Chang Kwan O residents should be able to get to Kowloon Bay directly. Now it's already 2013. We don't even get the N I L. And North Point Station is fully saturated. During the morning rush hours, the platforms of the North Point Station were so full that the M T R had to stop commuters from entering the gates at certain times. In the year 2000, N I L was planned to be commissioned between 2008 and 2012. Interchange at North Point Station is really congested at the moment. So we must have a concrete implementation table. Now, the Exhibition Station will be an interchange station for S E L. N I L must be commissioned before the S E L, actually. Now, the Chang Kwan O Line is already very congested. Therefore, the frequency should be enhanced. And from Lo Ha's Park, people should be able to cross the harbour directly throughout the whole day. So it's to enhance traffic and transport for Chang Kwan O. Now, the government has proposed an extension scheme for Chang Kwan O residents. One option is to arrive at Kowloon Bay Victoria Park directly via North Point, thus shortening the travelling period to fifteen minutes and shortening the time distance between Chang Kwan O residents and Hong Kong Island. So Chang Kwan O residents should be able to get to Kowloon Bay within fifteen minutes. All these should be included as parameters for design. That means travelling time should be no more than fifteen minutes so as to benefit Chang Kwan O residents. Next, Mr Mark Fu. Mr Chairman, we support the further development of the railway networks. S E L will be very competitive in West Kowloon to attract more commuters. But would like to remind the government that the interchange arrangement for S E L on Hong Kong Island is not perfect because we don't yet have a construction timetable for N I L. S E L will get around one million commuters every day. If the cross harbor section is not done well, most passengers will make an interchange at Admiralty Station that will not help ease the congestion along Nathan Road. So N I L should proceed as soon as possible.
And the expansion of the railway network would affect other means of transport. And for P R H development in Kai Tak, electric buses will be used. And there are also ideas of introducing electric taxis, et cetera. We hope that the fourth round of transportation network review can be done as soon as possible and for electric vehicles to be incorporated as green transport. I hope the administration would heed the needs of the transportation sector and conduct a fourth review as soon as possible. We hope that through improving the transport network, environmental protection can be achieved. Next, Mr Mark Fu.
Well, as a member of the concerned group, we are asked to comment on the seven local enhancement schemes. And on the local enhancement schemes, we need to consider the operational factors. We think that the North Island Line should be constructed as soon as possible and so that it can be connected with the western Shenzhen High by pass. And as for the other extension lines in the N D As, we think that consensus should be reached in the community first. For North Island Line, the proposal is that the cross harbor lines will be extended to the island side to offer greater traction to Tong Chung. And then some shadow stations will also be provided to ease traffic. On the whole, now synergy could be brought along with the construction of Shatin Central Link. People will be facilitated to cross the harbor. And but the swap scheme will also affect the people travelling to Tin Ho and Fortress Hill. So we don't support that. For interchange station, North Point Station is on the, the shadow station is on the northern side of the island. It will facilitate residents there. So we support the construction of the swap scheme. But then, when it was committed, when it's commissioned initially, it should operate in the way of, by way of interchange. For S I L West, on a macro level, the west side of the Southern District will be pushed towards the eastern side. The Wong Chau Hang causing a bottleneck. As for Hong Kong University Station, it's not the terminus. But for S I L West, they need to interchange further before they can reach the central part of the Hong Kong Island. Well, but we need to consider the platform will be situated on the east part of the Admiralty Station for interchange, which is at a deeper level underground. Of course, the Hong Kong University Station will be more convenient than the Admiralty Station. Well, most of the uses of Puk Llam Station or Puk Llam Section will be the western part of Southern District. So we think that the development of the Aberdeen Section and Puk Llam should go hand in hand. And it will shorten the time for interchange. The journey will be more direct so that for those travelling via West Road to Talentao, they will be more convenienced. So the administration, I'm sorry, your time's up. Next, Mr Choi.
I'd like to talk about satisfaction. I'm Kevin Choi. Now, satisfaction means expectation and scap with reality. According to A D S two thousand, the administration said that the North Island Line will be commissioned between 2008 and 2010. So expectation is here, but in reality, it's zero. So it has given negative satisfaction to the public. Next, I'd like to talk about demand. Now Chang Kwan O Line and the North Point Interchange are both very crowded. And in the latter half of this year, Chang Kwan O sixty-five B P R H development will be, will reach the intake stage. And the private development will also be completed, inducing a greater demand. And based on these two reasons, I'd like the administration to kickstart immediately the timetable for North Island Line and to enhance the frequency of Chang Kwan O Line. And also for trains leaving Lo Ha's Park to be able to cross the harbour. As for the swap scheme and the interchange scheme of the North Island Line, there are pros and cons. For the swap scheme, it can balance the need of residents in Chang Kwan O as well. And interchange scheme is more feasible because Chang Kwan O residents do not need to go past Fortress Hill before reaching Kowloon Bay so that within fifteen minutes they can cross the harbour. So I hope the administration would consider this point so that Chang Kwan O residents could reach Kowloon Bay in just fifteen minutes. Thank you. Next, Mr Long Chi Wei.
Thank you, Chairman. I am representative of an O C in Sio Sai Wan. Local residents all want a M T R station in Sio Sai Wan. And Sio Sai Wan has been developed for twenty years. The population is aging. Some elderly people have mobility problems. The feeder bus services are not that convenient. So if we have a station in Sio Sai Wan, it will facilitate local residents. I hope the administration would implement the proposal at once. All right, thank you.
Mr Lau Ho King. Thank you, Chairman. I'm also, I'm also living in Sio Sai Wan. I'm chairman of the Mutual Aid Committee of So He Laod in Sio Sai Wan State. We support the Sio Sai Wan One Line proposal. There are three schemes of the Sio Sai One Line. There are two schemes, one bifurcation scheme and feeder scheme. We support the spur line because I have been living in Sio Sai Wan for more than twenty years. And I wonder if Undersecretary has ever taken a minibus from Sio Sai Wan to Chai Wan. It takes around five to ten minutes, but it takes close to one hour's waiting time. I wonder if Undersecretary has ever gone to Sio Sai Wan. As for the spur line proposal, I think the focus is that the construction cost may be higher. But have we considered the scheme for future development? The spur line might be connected to, say, Check O. Can we think a step further ahead? The administration may need to pay more in terms of construction costs when the future costs may be lowered. And so many have had their view, so that's all for me. Thank you, Chairman. Next, Mr Chan Kin Yip.
Thank you. I'm from Liberal Party. I'm also living in Lanchi Kok. For residents living in Lanchi Kok and the Olympic Station, they mostly take the conventional lines rather than the express line because for the interchange at the Hong Kong Station, they need to walk for ten minutes. And the attraction is not very attractive. Because for Chin Wan Line, if they, if residents living along them, the line had to travel to Tong Chung Line is difficult because from Jordan to Kowloon, there is no connection. And if we have foot bridges connecting these two lines, definitely, these lines will become more attractive. Yes, it can be connected to Tong Chung Line at present, but residents need to take, need to walk for ten minutes before reaching the central station platform. So if more connections are provided, it will be more attractive. And in 2002, the administration completed the E I A for the North Island Line. Everything was ready. Now, a decade has passed. There is no timetable for North Island Line. I urge the administration to construct the North Island Line as soon as possible to ease the congestion along Chai Wan Line. Next, I'm...
Next, Mr Mark Fu. Yes, I'm Mark Fu. First of all, I think that there should be a timetable for North Island Line, as set by many other reputations in 2020. The Shatin Central Link will be completed. There will be a patronage of one million daily. And the first station to be commissioned is the Hong Kong C E C Station. And if North Island Line is constructed, interchange can be made at the Exhibition Station. If not, passengers will be forced to interchange at Admiralty Station. Admiralty Station will be totally crammed, and the ease, the traffic congestion cannot be eased. So the matter should be addressed as soon as possible. The administration should also consider extending the airport express line to Exhibition Station. So if it is extended, it can be more cost-effective. It will also facilitate the expansion of the H K C C project. At the same time, the Asia World Expo exhibition... The Asia World Expo Exhibition Centre and the H A C C and the airport can be linked to provide a more attractiveness to our tourism industry. And I hope the fourth review of our transportation hour can be conducted as soon as possible. Operators have come here and expressed their views on behalf of their sectors. And before implementing the railway development, the administration should assess in depth the impact on other transport operators. The last review was conducted in nineteen ninety nine. It was more than a decade ago in terms of the demographic changes, the merger of the two railway lines, the, so the development of communities, et cetera, et cetera. Um, there are major changes, so the fourth round review should be conducted so that the government gauge the present situation and plan for the future. In terms of the modes of transport, the government should also consider their role in the future. Next Mister Lam Tin Fu.
Thank you. I am from Motor Transport Workers General Union. I'd like to share our views on the railway development on behalf of our thirty thousand members. I think railway development is necessary. The problem, however, is with how the administration deals, deals with railway development. There are a number of problems. First of all. In the course of development, the administration only focused their resources on railway development. The government provided no assistance to other operators. And there are no assistance to help transport workers. Now, many members complained to our union, in particular taxi drivers. After the commissioning of the railway line, their business has been reduced by seventy percent. And many franchise, P L Bs and bus drivers told me that they have been forced to change jobs or even became unemployed. And with the commissioning of the South Island Line East, I believe that the unit will receive more complaints from members because the administration has totally ignored the livelihood of these transport workers. They're, they are getting more and more dissatisfied. I hope the administration could pay heed to that.
We are also of the view that railways are a mode of transport. But then a great deal of public resources have been used to subsidize railways. As were other modes of transport, they receive no subsidy from the government. This is unfair. Thirdly, the M T R C L has already resorted to vicious tactics to suffocate the development of other transport services. For example, K routes are free feeder services. And then high speed escalators were built to bring passengers down to the M T R Station. I think the government has condoned the M T R C L in doing that. Therefore, there's just no room for survival for other modes of transport running on the roads. As for supply and demand, there are problems with W I L. When they suffer a deficit, they will provide a lot of concessions, including interchange concessions for the passengers. I think there are management problems. But the M T R C L has not resorted to proper means to solve those problems. Rather, they try to oust the other modes of transport. I hope that councillors will take note of that. If you suffocate other modes of transport, members of other industries will be ousted from the trades and the public will have no alternative modes of transport. It's a totally losing situation. Mister Chairman, I'm a Southern District councillor as well as a Southern District resident. I'm out up saying from flight for the South Island Line West Alliance. In twenty oh seven, it was announced that S I L East would be constructed. Many of our residents have expressed their disappointment. On the twenty first this year, in this consultation document, the administration said that it would consult the public. Our alliance welcomed the S I L West, Tianwan, Park Fu Lam, Saiba Port and many places in the Southern District will benefit. We now see a glimpse of hope. The document mentioned the Aberdeen Section of S I L West. In fact, all along, we've been striving for that section. There's zero controversy. It will be able to serve many S I L West residents. So that should be constructed as soon as possible. As for the Park Fu Lam Section, there are technical complexities, demographic difficulties as well as certain opposition from the Southern District residents. So some residents do not fully support the Park Fu Lam Section. Therefore, our alliance has always been striving for a full construction of S I L West, but at the same time, support the administration's phased approach. Thank you. Mister Wong. Mister Andrew Wong. Mister Chairman, I represent A M S Public Transport Holdings Limited with the major operators of minibuses on Hong Kong Island. In recent years, drivers, salaries and other operational costs have been rising. It's very difficult to operate. Over seventy percent of our minibus routes have recorded a deficit. We're in an extremely difficult position. Operational costs are to further rise in future, thus leading to even more difficult operations on our part. As for S I L West, we understand public aspirations. But S I L East is still being constructed. Patronage as well as its impact on other modes of transport in Southern District are still not known. And we don't yet have the realignment and rationalization of all modes of transport in Southern District. So we doubt the actual patronage and effectiveness of W I L East. W I L East will impact hugely on the survival of minibuses, so we're very concerned. Therefore, this is not an opportune time to plan for S I L West. We're of the view that we should wait till S I L East has been commissioned and a comprehensive study be carried out first. Then we can estimate whether or not we should have S I O West. Next Mister Wong Yun Wood.
Thank you Chairman, I represent the Association of Hong Kong Railway Transport Professional. In past consultation exercises, the government has always asked us where we should have railways, when to build them, where to build them and so forth. I think you should think about the professionals and talents for the various industries and I T industry. So we should make full use of railway development to benefit Hong Kong. I'd like to present two aspects. First of all, training of talents. And secondly, support for our industries so that Hong Kong workers can directly benefit. Well, our railways have been operating for almost four decades. But even now, not one university is offering programs to train railway professionals and personnel. If we do not have sufficient good people to design our railways, given the high patronage of our railways, it will be a loss to Hong Kong. In the U K, for example, many of their old universities have programs on railways. Even Beijing Universities have railway programs. The M T R C L actually send people to the U K to be trained about railways every year. So why can't local universities also offer such programs? Our M T R has been operating for about four decades. We've been spending tens of billions of dollars on the procurement of equipment. Up to now, most of our equipment are imported. Have we ever thought about producing equipment locally? We absolutely have the technology and people to do that. It's just that the government has not offered us support. Yes, Hong Kong may lack heavy industries, but for electronic industries and computers, we have the professionals. Hong Kong absolutely has the ability to produce its own control rooms, computer rooms and so forth. But the government has never offered us support. We only rely on the M T R C L to do it. Can we model on other jurisdictions? Say if I build a railway, at least a certain percentage of my equipment must be locally manufactured and concessions should be offered for that. That is to benefit the development of our industries. Next, Miss Natalie Choi.
Thank you Mister Chairman. And I'd like to thank the M T R C L even more for refraining from building the N I L for the time being. Why? With many senior officials here today to listen to us. But ever since the start of the consultation exercise, many disappointing views were heard. Now for Western Harbour Crossing, that is along Tong Chung Line, it will use the same railway tracks as the Island Line. And every three and a half to four minutes, we can have a train in both directions using the Eastern Harbour Crossing. From Fortress Hill to Chaiwan, if that is to be amalgamated with the Tong Chung Line, then island residents will have to endure a frequency of four and a half to eight minutes. Then I have to tell the eastern residents, sorry. You know, the M T R C L increases its fares every year, but their trains often break down. In particular, for Tong Chung Line and Changquan O Line, their incident rate is higher than other rail lines. So it's all because of chopping up of lines. Apart from Tong Chung and Changquan O, they're asking island residents to accompany them. So in future, the Island Line will get more breakdowns as well. In fact, we don't have any space for the Exhibition Station, so we may have to reclaim land. From Coastway Bay to North Point and even Fortress Hill, I really don't know how they're going to build it. Many of the buildings there don't have piles. It's just like the Tai Kok Choy Station. I really don't know how they're going to go about the Tai Po Choy Station. For Fu Wing Garden, for example, we heard about subsidies and many people just don't know what to do. Well, this segregation approach, why was it proposed by the government? Is it because of mainland concerns? Our trains may be running at hundred and seventy five kilometers per hour. I think the M T R may procure very expensive trains from the mainland so that they can make profits. Miss Chang Laikin.
Thank you Mister Chairman. I'm the convener for the Central and Western Caucus of the Democratic Party. I'd like to make a few comments on the consultation documents. Now, if a Tong Chung resident wants to go to an A E, A and E department, he has to go to Queen Mary Hospital. From Shang Wan and Sai Ying Pon to Queen Mary Hospital, many minibuses already full. You may take number four bus to Queen Mary Hospital. A quicker method is to take a taxi. So concerning railways, I hope that for this extension from Central and Western to Southern District, I understand that space should have been reserved at the Hong Kong U to make way for a station at Hong Kong U to connect W I L with S I L. Queen Mary Hospital is to be redeveloped. I hope that I can take a railway to go to Q E H and Kwangwa Hospital as well. So in future, can it design it, can they design it in this way? That is, you can go from Kowloon to Hong Kong Island and then take W I L and go all the way to Southern District. Queen Mary Hospital serves hundreds of thousands of people. For Central and Western residents, they have to go to Queen Mary Hospital. The Kwangwa Hospital is only a convalescent hospital. There's no N E service. And then for the existing Island Line, it runs from Kennedy Town to Chaiwan in future. We would like to keep its integrity. Starting from nineteen eighty six, we had through service from Shang Wan to Chaiwan. So we would like to keep the interchange scheme. Would the Island Line be connected with Changquan O Line? Will we get Teima and Coastway Bay North as well in future? If you take an interchange at North Point in the morning, there are a lot of people. If you take Tong Chung Line via Laikin to Hong Kong Island, you'll see that many Changi residents are doing that. And they have to run to the Island Line to get connected to Coastway Bay. So in future, for Teima and Coastway Bay North or Exhibition Stations, will there be more convenient facilities for interchange? Ferry services have been cut and cut and cut. It's impossible to take ferry service anymore to go to work. And even Prince Atwell Station is very congested at the moment. So I hope that you can change people's traffic habits and reduce fares. Thank you.
Right, Under Secretary, anything to respond?
Thank you Chairman. Thank you. Friends who have attended this meeting here, you have given some valuable views. I particularly note that in this meeting deputations have talked about very diversified issues under the R D S review. And some suggestions have been given for reference. As set by adaptation, we need to see hope and vision. And in fact, for this review and update of the Railway Development Strategy two thousand, this is exactly our objective. We hope that in the coming ten years and the years thereafter, we can let members of the public know what our way forward is. That is why we have commissioned a consultant to formulate the blueprint in the future. And we have particularly asked the consultant to have public engagement exercises so that we have, we can engage the public and the users and stakeholders and members of the community. Well, users' comments are very important in helping experts resolve problems. And this is very important. That is why we have this public engagement exercise. We throw out ideas, and that is the local enhancement schemes recommended by the consultant for public to comment on them. More importantly, we need to explain to the public which option should be chosen and the justifications. You must let us know the reasons behind so that our consultant can understand from the perspective of users in recommending a certain option. This will provide input for their consideration. And deputations have also raised a number of viewpoints that are quite fresh to us. For example, some talked about the nurturing of talents, and I seldom heard this view at the public forums. I won't repeat all the points, but on a number of key issues, maybe I can respond. Now, many have pointed out that a new railway line might cause change in the behavior of passengers. It might cause inconvenience to some. But we need to think about the whole railway network. Inconvenience might be caused to a few. Some might need to change their behavior. But I hope that these passengers could understand that we're acting in the interest of the whole community. We are thinking from the perspective of the whole network. We should not just focus on the views of a certain community or a certain political party. What we want to do is to reach a consensus in this public engagement exercise for our way forward. Hong Kong is such a crowded place. If possible, MTR stations should be provided underground. We agree with this suggestion, but there are technical considerations. That is why in the consultation paper, we have set out the details of our difficulties. Some may have to do with technical difficulties, some may have to do with communities' views. And that they may have other views. So we set out all these difficulties in the paper for a more thorough and extensive discussion so that we have more diversified views for reference. We do not have a preconceived stance, but this will provide a broader base for our experts to consider the options and the justifications. After collecting all the views, they will put forward recommendations to the government. The third point I'd like to respond to is that both the community and the government feel that railway should be used as the backbone of our transportation system. But inevitably, railway development will affect the operation of other means of transport. So about a year or two before the line commences, we will definitely have an in-depth assessment and implement realignment proposals for the traffic affected by the railway line. For example, for the WIL and the SILE, we currently formulating realignment proposals in relation to taxis, minibus, and buses, etc. They will be realigned. We understand that there is room for survival for these kinds of transport, and this is our responsibility to implement this properly in the face of the commissioning of the new railway line. I think today we have focused on the proposals, in particular, the three schemes under the Island Line. We understand that there are more controversies or more heated discussion on the central part of the Island Line. So today's discussion has been fruitful, be it North Island Line or South Island East or South Island West. We have heard a lot of views. And I think today we have been able to discuss the pros and cons of various schemes. And these valuable views would help us at the next stage and would help the consultancy firm in formulating the blueprint as the next step. So I'd like to thank everyone for your views today. And it is... Our purpose is not to lead readers of the consultation paper into any direction, which is to throw out the problems, the questions, to help us think the way forward. And the public engagement exercise will end on the twentieth of May. During this period, I welcome all supplementary submissions and more detailed explanations. We welcome submissions via any means, for example, email, website, or fax. And we will also collate the views received in both stages of the PE exercise for the consultants' consideration. By the end of this year, they will put forward their recommendation on the railway development blueprint to the government in one go so that in the beginning of next year, we'll be able to brief you on the progress. In relation to the lines along NDAs, we'll also need to tie in with the consultation exercises for these NDAs before we preview on the blueprint as a whole. This is an ongoing interactive process. After we come up with a blueprint in terms of priority of to be accorded to lines, we will do it and we undertake that when we come to the construction of a certain line, we will, of course, consult the district and give members more information. I stress that we are at the stage of drafting blueprint, and we are going to come up with more details during the detailed design stage, and we will consult you again. But thank you once again for raising your valuable views today. I'll be open to questions from members. So four minutes each, questions and answers included. Mr. Wong Kok Hing, thank you, Chairman.
Chairman, first of all, Law Kin He ducked up history to attack the FTU and myself for the purpose of attacking us. And I express strong dismay. I think Mr. Law is being very unscrupulous. On this issue, during this term's presidential election, I also debated on this issue with Mr. Shin Chung Kai. We both talked about it, we both responded. So Mr. Law manipulated the subject and attacked me for the purpose of attacking me. So I express a strong dismay. And I'd like to make use of this platform to express my view as well as the view of the FTU. At the relevant meetings of the Transport Panel, I have already expressed my views. Perhaps, Mr. Law, you didn't pay attention. I have three points to make. We had a number of residents' meetings. We went to visit the district to collect views. And we had FTU members and ward officers at the districts collecting views of neighbors or of local residents. First point is on swap scheme and interchange scheme of the North Island Line. Starting from day one, I have already said that I do not support the swap scheme because we need to preserve the integrity of the Island Line, which had been commissioned since nineteen eighty-six. It greatly facilitated local residents, and this is the meridian of the Island Line, and it cannot be cut. The second point is about Siu Sai Wan. We have been reflecting the views and striving for its construction for many years. We have had many signing campaigns, we have had petitions. We think that the administration should consider the growing population and the growing demand in the district. Under this line, there are three schemes proposed: the spur line, the feeder service, so on and so forth. Well, just like what Mr. Kong Pak Cheung said, most importantly, the administration should kickstart the project as soon as possible. The extension scheme, I think, is more appropriate because it will provide a loop or circular line. Third point, about South Island Line. Now, South Island Line currently will terminate at South Horizons. It's disappointing. For West Side Line, the West Terminus will sit at Hong Kong University, and it is poor planning.
The best solution is to link up the SIL West and the WIL. But at this stage, we must take into account the Wa Koo Fu Wa Koi residents as well as the users of Queen Mary Hospital. So you must consider the residents' expectation. Thank you. Mr. Tan Karpew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make two comments. I'm an Island District Councilor as well as a District Councilor of East Eastern District Council. Now, we're forty thousand people as well as three thousand villagers, as well as ten thousand people in PRH. So fifty-three thousand people, a bit less than Siu Sai Wan, but more than Kwangpo Garden. I urge the government and the MTRCL to do something on the planning in the year 2000. Tongchung Bay reclamation as well as Tongchung reclamation as a whole should be reconsidered. Be it Tongchung West or these options mentioned in the consultation documents, I'd like to know when a decision would be made, and will there be any compensation? Take Tongchung West as an example. A single-trip fare is very high. And then Route thirty-eight on Lantau Island also add to the fares to be paid by the commuters. In Yuen Long Tai Po, feeder buses are free. So can Tongchung West residents use genuine feeder buses free of charge to go to Tongchung Station? They're known as feeder buses, so they should be free. Besides, for this compensation concept, I hope that you can adopt it in all the options here. And just now, some deputations suggested that you should plan for traffic and transport on a comprehensive basis. In RDS 2000, you say that if SCL is completed, regional express line is also completed. With all the five major railways in place, they'll take on fifty-three percent of the total number of commuters. MTRCL has got a forty-six-point-four percent share of the market. That's a very high percentage. If all these railways are completed, that will further rise to sixty percent. Now, that will deal a heavy blow to other modes of transport. Our workers may not get a pay rise. They may suffer in the end. And under the mechanism for upward and downward adjustments, we should comprehensively review our whole TNT network and review the roles of every mode of transport. Mr. Yao, any response?
Mr. Chairman, concerning Mr. Wong Kok Hing's viewpoints, we've actually recorded them already previously. As for Mr. Tan Karpew's comments, I believe for Tongchung West, we'll be able to identify land for the construction of a station even without reclamation. As for the actual locations, we've not come to that stage yet. Conceptually, that should be feasible anyway. As for feeder buses and compensation, so to speak, at this stage, we're only listening to public views. At the end of the year, the consultancy will submit a report to us. The next year, we'll report back to you and set priorities. Mr. Shin Chung Kai. Mr. Chairman, a few comments. Siu Sai Wan extension is needed. All the options have their pros and cons. At the end of the day, our residents would like to see Siu Sai Wan extension commissioned as soon as possible. And then it's also necessary to connect Hong Kong Island South and Hong Kong Island North, as well as the eastern part of the Hong Kong Island. At present, we don't have sufficient facilities. Look at the demands of the staff members of Cyberport and Queen Mary Hospital. In particular, I believe there's a rather huge potential for growth at Queen Mary Hospital. As for the two schemes, island residents want an integral line from Siu Sai Wan to Kennedy Town in future. So I hope that the bureau can put on record these views. Mr. Chan Ham Pang. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We know that Tongchung is a remote place. The residents there badly need something like the WIL. Be it stage one or stage two of the consultation exercise, I discovered that the consultation documents have a very clear orientation. For Hong Kong Station, for example, we're told that Tongchung Line still have a great deal of spare capacity. But many commuters, they can interchange at Lai King and Nam Chong. Under such a circumstance, how are you going to collect statistics for Tongchung Line? So the document is misleading. It's also said in the document that there are a number of bus routes going from Tongchung to other parts of Hong Kong Island. In fact, only two of those routes are whole-day routes. So the consultation document seems to be suggesting that there are so many bus routes. and certain services won't be required. That's not true. We don't want the government to try to justify its inaction on Tong Chong Line. That's another problem with the document. For the proposed Chin Wan to Chin Moon rail line, the same happens. There's no simulated drawing for all other rail lines except Chin Wan, Chin Moon Line. The picture shows us that there's this bridge, bridge, so to speak, right in front of a building. Now, is the document trying to guide public opinion? I hope that the government can be more neutral and objective in its consultation. Members of the public should be led objectively to a decision. The document seems to be suggesting that that rail line is not needed, the government doesn't think is needed, et cetera, et cetera. So I really want the government to comment on the Tong Chong extension, Tong Chong Line extension. Mr. Yao? Concerning Mr. Shin Chung Kai's remarks, they're presented on various occasions in the past, we've put them on record, we understand the views of the Democratic Party. As for Mr. Chan's remarks about the Tong Chong Line extension, I'd like to say this. Views expressed today also cover other modes of transport. That is, when we develop railways, we should also consider other modes of transport. That has always been the case. So we're trying to explain our concerns and thoughts to you. It's not true that we're only promoting railways. We do bring out possible problems and explain to you. We explain clearly to you so that you can make your own decisions and choices. We mention technical and engineering problems, impact on the residents, deviser views among residents. Oh, Mr. Yao, I'm talking about the reference to figures. For bus services, you do not give us the details, so you may be misleading the public. I believe that we're only sharing with you our concerns. If you want supplementary data, I can further clarify, but I just want to give you the overall picture. For the drawings similar to other construction projects, it's good to present simulated scenarios for you. Now, we present that picture in front of you, you can study whether the difficulties can be overcome. Time's up. Next, Mr. Frankie Yig?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the deputations and individuals today for expressing their views. For the seven major proposals, some are less controversial. Today, we heard about urgency or emergency, but in the consultation document, certain data are lacking, for example, in terms of construction costs, future fares and so forth. I think we need those data for deliberation. If you only ask us whether we need a particular extension line, well, the answer will definitely be in the affirmative because residents are bound to support you. But we want more detailed data like fares in the future. And the deputations also ask you for a fourth comprehensive transport study. I also asked you for that previously. And Mr. Yao, you said that after this consultation exercise, a report will be passed to us. Not only the Liberal Party is putting up certain requests, other political parties also put up a number of requests. Mr. Yao? What's your response? For the railway network and related fares, we're thinking of a similar fare structure as at present. We're not asking the passengers to shoulder all construction costs. As regards the construction costs for each section, we'll provide you with financial information in due course. As for the comprehensive transport study, railways will serve as a backbone in future. After completing this consultation exercise, we'll proceed to the next stage of planning.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to present three comments. Concerning the Siu Sai Wan spur line, if the government is committed to that, then you should not ask tricky questions. If we need these rail lines, we can sit down and discuss the details. For example, why should we have different modes of construction for different sections? Even if you are to have an elevated railway, you don't need to have it right in front of residential blocks. As for N I L, I'd like to respond to one of the speakers just now. He said that new railways are bound to have certain impacts. Now, for the island line, if you adopt the swap scheme, you're asking island passengers to rise midway and give way to other passengers. For Kun Chong Line, we go all the way to Chim Sha Choi. Now, even at Mom Kock, you may get a seat. Well, under the swap scheme, you won't get any seats. You may not even be able to board the train. You may have to wait for three to four trains before you can board. How can you ask our residents to accept such absurd schemes?
So, whether it is Tong Chong Line or Ching Kuen Ho Line, once passenger come to the island side, they should follow the existing practice. I think there will not be any problem to anyone. They can reach T E M A or H K C C, whatever. Like a lot of deputation have said, it's all about interchange and connection. Can you link Cos Way Bay with the line? Well, there are a lot of problems. If you force us to accept the swap line, then swap scheme, then there will be problems. Now, the D A B agrees supports the extension to the Western District. I don't know what's the reason why this cannot be done, but if it can be extended to Wa Fu and residents in the Southern District, I think that this section should go ahead first. I don't know if the line is constructed in one go, I don't know when it will be done. But it doesn't mean that we're not striving for the extension of the S I L to Western District. I want to reiterate that the D A B is not selling out anyone, is we're not sacrificing the interest of anyone. If the majority of the Southern District residents could enjoy the service of the railway line, we will strive for one section to be built first before, but we'll continue to strive for the construction of the whole line. Under Secretary, any response? We have heard the views of various D A B members on various occasions. Mr. Long Khoong? Now, Mr. Christopher Jung asked about the spur line of Siu Sai Wan Line. Well, this is the execution, politically speaking, because the proposals or schemes can be put forward and then it can be rejected at the initial stage. This is irresponsible. I have a suggestion. When the administration is really consulting the public, well, fifty million dollars are being spent, but at least thirty, I mean, three, thirty million dollars should be used to set up a platform for the opposing voices. It's not a waste of money because if you spend money to create such a platform, you will not be criticized for insufficient consultation. Another point to be put on record is Mr. Shin Chung Kai and Mr. Chan Han Pan, both said that their points should be put on record. But what's the purpose of putting your views on record? You should respond to the views as soon as possible. And in constructing railway lines, you should address the issue of housing land. You should not just give away the land for M T R C L to commence luxury, luxury residential projects. You should consider the golden opportunities for more housing supply brought about by the railway development. The other point is that you should table a bill as soon as possible. M T R C L is such a major organization, it has a fifty percent share in the transportation sector, so it should set up a fund. One is a construction reserve fund so that it doesn't need to ask the government for money. And by doing so, the M T R shareholders will immediately sell their shares so that you can acquire the twenty percent share from individual shareholders. Do you understand? Because you don't need to give money for its construction projects and there won't be any fare hikes. So just take my suggestion, there won't be any filibustering so that you, you can buy back all the shares and everyone will stand to benefit. All right, put it on record, I need an answer on the next occasion. Under Secretary, I've heard Mr. Long's views, I have nothing to supplement. Mr. Long Chi Chang?
Thank you, Chairman. This is the stage two P exercise on the local enhancement schemes. Some points in the consultancy study, I think, are not accurate, just like Chin Moon and Yuen Long. There are two proposals, one is Chin Moon South and that is for West Rail Line to be extended to the south of Chin Moon. The other proposal is to add Hong Shui Kiu Station to the line. Now, I, when I look at the figures, which are projections based on the peak hours as in twenty eleven to and we, I see all the figures like seven hundred, seventy-five thousand, et cetera, by twenty thirty-one. I don't think these figures are accurate because the population in Chin Moon at present stands at one million and in the coming ten years, it will grow to over two hundred thousand. It will be increased by two hundred thousand. So you talk about the pros and cons, for example, for Hong Shui Kiu Station, it will only be used by residents living in Hong Shui Kiu, et cetera, but another, passengers will not use the station, but that is the existing situation already. So this is somewhat self-deceiving. I don't know why you have come up with this conclusion. So we support the extension line and Hong Shui Kiu Station. Perhaps, Under Secretary, you can say something about the population projections or the train frequency projections included in the report. Under Secretary, maybe I'll give a general reply and then I'll defer to my colleague in the highway department. About the figures quoted, they come from the C N S D and the planning department. So we refer to the data and make the projections according to our past experience. So that is the basis. As for the impact on existing passengers, like I said just now, we want to throw out the questions for your consideration in a transparent manner. It doesn't mean that in the end, we will say no to it. We just want to raise all the questions so that we understand the consequences of making certain decisions. Maybe I'll defer to Director, Mr. Chan, to say a few words about that. Now, on planning, we have all along been using the territory-wide data on working population in Hong Kong and this is the data that we get from the C N S D for the purpose of preparing projections for different developments. And we use a full-stage model to project the population and this is the usual method for preparing projections. Anything to follow, Mr. Long Chi Chang? All right, Dr. Elizabeth Quat? Elizabeth Quat? No? Mr. Michael Ten?
Thank you, Chairman. I need to declare my interest. I was formerly the chairman of the K C R C, so I I support railway as a backbone of our transport network. G M, P L Bs and buses should be supportive means, they should provide feeder services. But in the long run, I think that the government should enhance two areas. One is to fully implement interchange concessions. There are only some fifty routes under the interchange concessionary program. Can you extend the concessions to all P L B routes? And we're talking about the fifty-fifty split of profit. I don't think it's fair. I think the mini buses should only have twenty percent share and eighty percent for the M T R in order to achieve the best cost effectiveness. If the fare levels are similar, then on the one leg of the journey, well, he, you need to stay on the crowded train. On the other leg, there is point-to-point service where the passenger can sit comfortably. This is unfair. The other is about the relief to crowdedness and at present, it's, no train frequency will be increased if the patronage is below seventy percent. But now, social demand is very different from the past. We don't want bodily contact, we want personal space. So what is meant by crowded, you need to adjust according to our social development. You need to increase the frequency so that people feel that M T R is also a comfortable means of transport instead of buses and mini buses. I have repeatedly made this point to the M T R C L. I'd like whether you have, I'd like to see whether you have anything to respond today. I'd like whether you have, I'd like to see whether you have anything to respond today. Another point is about feeder bus services by the M T R C L. Why can't this be outsourced to G M Bs or buses, bus companies? And very often, they cannot start, they cannot operate new routes. So you can have a win-win situation and you can outsource the feeder bus routes to these companies. Everyone will get a share of the pie in the community. Will you consider that, Under Secretary?
A simple response to Mr. Ten's comments, I think I can reflect his views to the M T R C L for further discussion on a on extending the interchange concessionary program to all routes we can discuss with the M T R C L. But I must emphasize that on the part of the administration, we will encourage the M T R C L and other operators to provide more concessions to encourage the public to take public transport. As for patronage, you can say that the M T R C L is also mindful about the problem of overcrowding. They also, they're also planning to increase more trains along different lines and this is what they're doing. About the third point, again, I can reflect your view to the M T R C L for further discussion. All right, time is up. No other member wishes to ask questions? So I'd like to thank deputations and members of the community for attending today's meeting. And I'd like to thank the administration for taking part in this meeting, meeting agenda.